Consensus on that? All right. Okay, so with that, we're on to item six. Let me get this. Item 6.1. A public hearing for the Emery Station West at the Emeryville Transit Center Heritage Square Garage. And this is from Helen.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So this evening, the City Council will be considering three agreements related to the Transit Center: a funding agreement, a remediation agreement, and a development agreement. And to, as background, just to orient everyone here, the Transit Center involves two property sites. One is a 1.5-acre mound site, which is directly north of the Amtrak station. That's owned by CBS, a successor company of Westinghouse Corporation, and it's subject to a long-term lease held by Wareham Development and was subleased to the Redevelopment Agency. There's the 1.1-acre Heritage Square surface parking lot to the north, which is owned by Wareham Development. Focusing on the mound site, the previous use on this site was by Westinghouse. These photographs down here show the Westinghouse facility when it was being demolished and when it was closed. And Westinghouse used it for the maintenance in a pair of electrical devices such as transformers, which contained PCBs. Because of the PCBs on the site, in 1985, the Environmental Protection Agency issued a consent agreement that required Westinghouse to place the contaminated soils within a slurry cutoff trench sealed with an engineered cap and limited the future use of the mound parcel to surface parking. Also, this consent agreement allows CBS to maintain this engineered hazardous waste dump, essentially that's what it is, in the center of the city indefinitely. So as first identified in the 1999 Redevelopment Agency, 1995 Redevelopment Agency Implementation Plan, the city's vision was to really remediate the site and to redevelop it as a high-density intermodal transit-oriented public-private development. In September 2005, the Redevelopment Agency entered into an exclusive right-to-negotiate agreement with Wareham Development that expired in October 2009 and couldn't be extended because of the dissolution of redevelopment. Wareham Development moved forward with the design of the project and submitted a design for the Emery Station West Transit Center project to the city, and the City Council approved the design review and use permit on February 16, 2010, and extended that permit to February 16, 2014, in February 2012. According to our ordinance, the City Council may extend project approvals for up to five years from the original date, or February 16, 2015. So the Emery Station West project consists of the two properties I already identified. On the mound site would be developed Emery Station West, which is a public-private mixed-use development, 248,000 gross square feet of office, laboratory space, and seven stories on top of a two-story parking transit podium. There'd also be 2,400 square feet of ground-level active space with retail and transit-oriented functions. In the parking podium, and the plans are down here, there'd be 125 public parking spaces and 23 private parking spaces, and at least four bus bays serving Amtrak. So these show the bus bays right here, and these are the railroad tracks down here. This is a rendering of the Heritage Square parking structure. It's a seven-level parking garage, has all private parking spaces in it, 675 that will serve the Heritage Square and the commercial space in Emery Station West. And there's 3,600 square feet of active commercial uses fronting Horton Street in this project. The project also includes improvements to the Amtrak station and public plaza, widening of the platform in front of the Emery Station West project, and improvement of the plaza between the Amtrak station and the Emery West project, which is shown in this plan right here. The improved plaza also includes an improved connection to the pedestrian bridge. There's a rebuilt stairway you kind of see right here at the ground level. And then at the second floor, there's access from a garden on the top of the podium, which is publicly accessible as well. So we moved ahead with environmental remediation planning for the site. A final feasibility study and remedial action plan was approved in April 19, 2010, and that identified a host of environmental contaminants on that site. In addition to PCBs, there's volatile organic compounds and semi-volatile organic compounds and all of these other items you can see listed here. And following from that, there was a final remedial design and implementation plan, which sets forth the specifications for actually implementing the FS wrap. That was completed January 21, 2011. These have both been approved by the EPA and DTSC, and the last approval was February 11, 2011. The remediation plan in these plans is based on a risk-based remedial approach. The excavation is to approximately nine and a half feet below ground surface, an installation of sub-slab venting system to mitigate residual volatile contaminants. The slurry wall will continue to function, and the building foundation will be constructed to create an impermeable surface equivalent to the existing cap. And the estimated costs range from $6.8 million to $9.1 million. And if you have more questions about the remediation specifically, at the end of my presentation, our consultant, Earl James, from EKI, who prepared the FS wrap report, is here, and he can answer any more detailed questions about remediation. So now I'm going to move into and give you an overview of the agreements that are before you. There's basically three agreements. The first is the Agreement for Public Improvement Funding and Public Parking Lease and Option to Acquire Easement Agreement. We're going to call that the Funding Agreement. The second agreement is the amended and restated Environmental Remediation and escrow Agreement, and the third is the Development Agreement. So going to the Funding Agreement. The Funding Agreement covers the conditions related to the funding of grants that the city's obtained for the project, the successor agency funding that is pledged to the project, the public parking 12-year lease that will be providing funding to offset the costs of remediation, and it also includes a permanent easement agreement for when the lease expires. So overall, the conditions precedent to the effectiveness of the Funding Agreement are that before June 30 of this year, the developer, CBS, and the city must have executed the remediation agreement, and the developer and CBS must have executed a transfer agreement, which essentially shifts ownership of the site to the developer. The existing parking sublease on the site, which is the, essentially, the sublease, that's the successor agency's sublease at this time, is suspended during remediation and construction, and the developer has five years from the date of the agreement to complete remediation or is required to reinstall the surface parking. During remediation and construction, the developer is required to provide temporary parking, provide 125 temporary replacement parking spaces. That is pursuant to the Temporary Parking License Agreement, which is an attachment to the Funding Agreement, and those temporary parking spaces be at the terraces. The Funding Agreement outlines how the different grant agreements would be funded. So first, with the STIP funding, that's $4.2 million from the State Transportation Improvement Program. It's a grant that the city's received for public parking and bus bays. The developer will comply with all of the state grants' requirements, and the city and developer will also work together to obtain an extension of the June 30, 2015 grant deadline. We have another grant of $836,000 from the Federal Highway Administration for either the public plaza or platform improvements. So the developer must elect to use these funds no later than two years after commencing construction. Otherwise, they would be available to the city, but only for some improvements related to the Amtrak public plaza or train platform. Then there's the successor agency funding. That's $4,230,952 for public parking and bus bays, which has been subject to the City Successor Agency Transit Center Public Parking Funding and Sublease Assignment Agreement, which was executed June 26, 2012. And this is the agreement that is in ongoing litigation with the state of California. And right now, as we understand, the Court of Appeal is expected to give us a decision on that agreement before the end of the calendar year. Those funds are in escrow pending a final decision. But it's important to understand that these funds cannot be used on another project. They're subject to the June 26 agreement, enforceable obligation. If the city loses the litigation, the funds would be distributed to all taxing entities. So in the Funding Agreement, the conditions precedent to using the successor agency funding are listed here. The remediation needs to be completed, and the developer has to have title to the property. The litigation needs to have been favorably resolved. The construction of the podium has to have commenced by the deadline that's in the Transit Center Public Parking Funding and Sublease Assignment Agreement, which is January 1, 2015. However, that deadline could be extended because of delay caused by the litigation. And the public parking lease needs to have been executed. So moving on to the lease. On November 6, 2012, the City Council, you directed us to negotiate an agreement that used the maximum of 12 years of city property tax revenues from the project to offset the cost of remediation. And so the funding mechanism we're using here is a parking lease. So the lease term, not the rent necessarily, I'll talk about that in a second, but first it's important to understand the lease term. It's 12 years, but there's an additional seven years for possible delay of construction of the private improvements after the podium is completed, because the developer could go in, build the podium improvements, and included all of the public improvements, and then wait until the market was right to build the private portion of the project. So we have terms to protect ourselves from that situation. So if the developer constructs the entire project at once, the lease commences upon completion of the entire project. The rent would be equal to the city's share of property tax from Emery Station West and the Heritage Square parking garage for the 12 years. If private improvements are delayed, the lease will commence upon completion of the podium, so the lease term starts there. But the rent would only be $1 a year until the earlier of seven years after execution of the lease or completion of construction of the private improvements. So once those milestones are reached, then the 12-year period starts. And so then, for the reigning 12-year term, the rent would be equal to property tax. During the lease, the developer is responsible for the operation and maintenance of public parking and bus bays, and the city would be obligated to charge a marking rent for the parking, and that would be agreed to between the city and the developer. The Amtrak patrons, however, do have the right to park there for free, as they do now. Any funds the city receives from parking fees would be remitted to the developer. So after the lease is over, that's when the permanent easement is exercised. And at that time, the developer still is responsible for operation and maintenance of the parking spaces and bus bays, but the city would pay its proportionate share of those costs to the developer, and that would be agreed to as part of an annual budget process. And the city could choose whether or not to charge fees for the public spaces and would retain all the revenues. So that's the Funding Agreement. Now I'm going to move on to the amended and restated Environmental Remediation and escrow Agreement. This is a three-way agreement between CBS, Wareham Development, and the city, and it sets forth the mutual responsibilities of CBS and Wareham Development in remediating the site. The city's obligation under the agreement is that, once the remediation project is completed, the city releases and covenants not to sue CBS for further investigation, cleanup, removal action, remediation, or monitoring of any hazardous materials remaining on the site. However, it's important to point out that the covenant is not applicable to any hazardous materials on the site that are subsequently identified by the U.S. EPA or DTSC. It only relates to the hazardous materials that are known at the present time. So this agreement is important because it provides an incentive for CBS to proceed with the further remediation of the site and essentially participate in this transaction, because it protects them from certain liability they see from the city. So now moving on to the Development Agreement. The Development Agreement provides vested rights to build a project based on the existing approvals for five years, and it would expire in 2018. At that time, the developer would pay the then-applicable building fees when they pull the permits. It allows for the resolution of the ongoing litigation with the Department of Finance. It gives time for that to be worked out and to secure the Redevelopment Agency funding for the project. So in order to approve the Development Agreement, there has to be two findings. First, it needs to be consistent with the general plan. And it's consistent with the general plan for these reasons. It adds laboratory, office, ground-level, commercial, transit-oriented uses to create a mix of uses that strengthen the economic base. That's a goal, and the general plan is identified here. It also supports transit uses through bus bays and public parking, pedestrian plaza, increases the platform area, and enhances the pedestrian-bike bridge connection, and that's also the general plan policy identified here. The next finding is that it needs to be in the public interest. And it is in the public interest, because this project remediates the mound site, it improves intermodal connectivity by providing public parking structure and bus bays, you have an improved transit plaza, there's an improved connection to the pedestrian-bicycle bridge, and also that creation of the podium-level landscape plaza area. So these photographs here show you what the situation currently is, and I think it's pretty evident the need for improvement. So the Planning Commission considered the Development Agreement October 24, 2013. Six commissioners were present, two voted in favor, two voted opposed, and two abstained. So no recommendation is forwarded to the City Council tonight, since the abstentions do not count toward the vote. So to summarize the financial considerations of these transactions, the city is contributing 12 years of the project's future property tax revenue to offset the cost of site remediation, and we've estimated that to be approximately $2.7 million on a net present value basis. The city is providing $8.5 million in state and federal grants and successor agency funds to offset the costs of public parking and bus bays and public plaza improvements. And the project generates future property tax revenues after the 12-year lease term, so it will receive 100% of the property tax from the project at that time, estimated to be $329,000 in year 13, and that would increase 2% annually. In addition, these agreements leverage state, federal, and successor agency and city funds to remediate the site and improve and expand public facilities. The actual cost of remediation and building the public facilities is more than what the city would be contributing. The state grant and successor agency funds are also project-specific, and the funding is lost if it's not used on this Transit Center project. And the agreements also reduce risk to the city for the construction of the public improvements, because the developer's committing to assume all the risk for cost overruns. To summarize the project benefits, resulting in remediating the mound site, creating improved parking and bus bays, a renovated, expanded public plaza, and improved pedestrian-bicycle bridge connection across the railroad. Overall, the intermodal transit connections are improved, and we're strengthening the city's economic vitality through the expansion of its bioscience cluster. So lastly, our recommendation is that you approve the Agreement for Public Improvement Funding, that provides financial assistance to the project. You approve the amended and restated Environmental Remediation and escrow agreement, that provides CBS with protections it requires in order to move forward, and approve the Development Agreement to secure existing project entitlements to allow for the resolution of pending litigation. So that's the end of my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Do you want to open the public hearing first?
Could we hear from the public first?
Okay. You'd like to hear from the public?
First thing I want to say is this should be called the Automotive Project instead of the Transit Center. You know, when I agreed to put money into this, it was with the understanding that all the toxicity was going to be removed from the site. I had no idea it would only be just a top level. I mean, to let CBS off the hook for all that toxic waste that exists under there, suppose you have an earthquake and that's released. Why would they be released? I just can't understand why you would release CBS. You know, and the public parking that's going to be there, that should be granted. The city should have that forever. That parking should be granted to the city. With all the money we put into this project, that's the very minimum we should get out of it. I mean, you know, I mean, I'm really disturbed that that toxicity is still going to be there, and we're paying all this money. You know, I don't even think the developer wanted to do this project. Nobody would touch it, but the city manager wanted it done. City manager went to Wareham to get this project done, and that's how it started. I don't know, I just don't think CBS should be right off the hook, and I'm concerned about our liability. You know, is there any provision for the Emery Ground in this station? I mean, you know, we may expand it, we may do different things. It shouldn't just be, you know, and then those buses that go to San Francisco. We need to find a way to allow people to get on those buses so they can go to San Francisco. I mean, anyway, I have a lot of questions about this project, but thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Jeff Sears with Wareham Development. Since we're the applicant, I'm hoping I can have a couple more minutes than three, but I'm going to use your time very efficiently. This project, we think, is as important to Emeryville as San Francisco's new transbay terminal is to them, and it provides a lot of the same benefits in similar ways as that project, specifically a private component that helps build and expand an existing transit benefit to that city. It's a project that's been approved by two prior city councils. Unfortunately, the state's quandary with its financial condition over the last four or five years, part of which led to the disassembling of redevelopment, has made us, and working closely with city staff, try to put the pieces of the project back together to keep it alive and sustain what we think are really material public benefits that it brings. And so I think what Helen, I think, did a good job of outlining are how we've put those pieces back together in a way that can make this project possible. I think few would have foreseen the real success that the existing Amtrak station would have back in the mid-'90s, when Wareham and the city first decided to pursue a public-private partnership for it. And I think the successes everyone believes have been great, substantial, and more than anticipated. This project helps build on those. Last year, the Capitol Corridor set a new record with over 1.75 million passengers riding on it. Again, this project allows that growth and the opportunity for other transit methods to serve Emeryville, both people moving in and out and in-between. It will double the amount of space devoted to the connectivity to the trains, buses, cabs, cars, because by putting the bus bays in that ground level of the podium, right next to the tracks where the Capitol Corridor really wants them to be, all the area in front of the station where the buses are today is now available for other connectivity. And like I say today, that's vans, cabs, there's a car-share pod that operates on the site. Maybe in 10 years, there'll be other ways of connecting. The existing platform will be widened. I mentioned that the connection from the trains to the buses being directly is a key thing that Amtrak and Capitol Corridor has wanted to accomplish. The connectivity with bicycles as a means of first or last mile will be improved. The Capitol Corridor, in its recent survey, found that 10% of its riders connect with bicycles, and they've taken steps such as improving and expanding the facilities for bicycles on their trains. They actually have room for segways on their trains. Now, I don't see a lot of those today, but the point is, there are lots of ways to do that first and last mile. We're seeing more and more. So we think this project will address ones we know about, but also will have some opportunity to address the future by just having a more large real estate piece devoted to that connectivity. As Mr. Lutz mentioned earlier, and the mayor mentioned in her discussion on the state of the city, we think transit is really important for...
Mr. Sears, can you please wrap it up, because I don't want to get into extending time for some people?
Okay, all right.
But I also imagine that if the council has questions, that they'll be able to address you as well.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, so I'll try to do it quickly. Clearly, transit is a direct relationship to quality of life in a livable city, which is part of the tenets of the general plan. Helen mentioned that effectively, the EPA has, with its grant decree, allowed CBS to have a toxic waste dump here, and so making a deal that encourages them to allow the abatement is really essential. Helen also mentioned that the public funds, mostly from other people, are only available to this project, and she said they don't cover the whole cost, effectively, both with the abatement and with the bus bays and the parking.
Thank you.
Our private funds will be paying roughly half of that cost.
Thank you.
It starts before I start talking, I guess. Well, I'm kind of surprised to hear Mr. Sears and Mr. Robbins, who is the CEO of Wareham here, talking so fondly about bicycle transit, because you may remember, Mr. Robbins himself approached this body several years ago and asked you to remove the Horton Street Bike Boulevard, just get rid of it entirely, and he wanted to shunt the bikes over by the railroad tracks, presumably because bicycles were crapping his Transit Center project and the other projects in the area. So it's funny now to see, now they suddenly really like bikes, whereas before, they were none too fond of bicycling. Further, as you know, we have a bicycle boulevard on the street, and so this project is going to put 850 parking spots on a bicycle boulevard, so generating hundreds of automobile trips a day on a bicycle boulevard, which is only allowed to have 3,000 vehicle trips per day, as you know. So that's sure to be a conflict with bicycling, which is, they haven't mentioned strangely. Okay, I think Mr. Bukowski, when he called it an automotive center more fairly than Transit Center, is actually a fair assessment. With the four bus bays, that's what we're getting, four bus bays, it's more aptly, it should be called an automotive center, and that's what you're being asked to give public money to here tonight. And I think it's really bad public policy. This project will not clean up the toxins, as we know. Right now, the toxins are entombed, cannot migrate, the EPA tells us that. And when this project is finished with all this public money, it will still be entombed and can't migrate. The difference is, right now, we're making no money off that site, and when this project is finished, we'll also make no money for 13 years, and then we'll make some pittance, as Ms. Asher showed us in her State of the City presentation. The Upper Plaza proposed will not be used, and you can tell that because the existing Upper Plaza that Mr. Robbins built across the street is empty. I've been there many times. I've never seen a soul there, ever, other than security guards. Never seen a soul in the Upper Plaza, Elevated Plaza. So that's a red herring, where there's going to be no use there, that's not a public benefit. Your Planning Commission, your hand-selected planning... Your planning commission, your hand-selected planning commission, has told you now twice that there's not enough public benefit for this project. We're giving public money, many millions of dollars of our money, to this project. And your planning commission has twice told you that there's not enough public benefit. Now, Ms. Bean here was loathe to say that they voted no to the project, but in fact, it was a no vote. The planning commission voted twice no to this project. So I think you should take that into serious consideration. I'm going to speak just for a little bit longer, as the other speaker did.
Please wrap it up.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, here. One last concern I wanted to say, if you ask Mr. Robbins now about his other projects, you'll note that many of his buildings are sitting idle, half-used, some not used at all. So I'm really concerned that he wants to build another project like this when his existing projects aren't being fully utilized. And I'm afraid what he's trying to do perhaps is sell entitlements. In other words, get permission and then sell the entitlements to another developer. We should hold out for another developer, this is not a transit center. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Bob Cantor. I'm the president, CEO of the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce. We sent you a communication late this afternoon. I hope some of you had a chance to see it. If not, I'll just summarize it very briefly. It was an email correspondence, roughly 3:30 this afternoon. I will not repeat it here, I'll just summarize it very briefly. Number one, the two main reasons why we agree, why we think this is a good deal, besides the fact that it's been languishing for quite some time and it's time for action. Number one, it does address the cleanup. There's a very complex, I think, funding formula to get that done. And as has been documented by Helen, you stand the risk of losing some of that funding if we don't act. The second reason is regarding the economic benefits, we say once again, we don't believe they've been fully presented to you. I haven't heard anyone mention this evening, except for some of the things that Helen said. When you have a large project, it's 248,000-plus square feet and then the parking garage, this not has been mentioned about, property tax hasn't been mentioned, sales tax revenue, business license tax revenue, Measure A revenue for the schools, 15 cents a square foot on a 248,000-square-foot building, not counting the parking garage, money for the P-bid for the Emery Ground generated for the P-bid taxes, not to mention business license taxes, utility user taxes, none of this has been presented to you tonight, art in public places. So it benefits either our school district, I understand Measure A goes to the schools, not to the city, but it benefits the school district. The P-bid money goes to benefit the Emery Ground, which benefits transit, art in public places, utility users' tax revenue, which goes directly to you, that's just a check sent to you, it's unencumbered general fund money, as is sales tax and business license tax revenue. That has not been discussed tonight. So there's significant economic benefits to this building besides what's been presented tonight. It's been languishing for quite some time. You've been bombarded with material and data over the years. So as the planning commission, it's time for action. And as we've discussed to you on a one-on-one basis, I've had meetings with you about a book that we are fans of at the chamber. As we now know, we can't count on our federal nor our state government to take our economic debts in our hands. We have to do it ourselves. Cities are going to have to do this, especially in the post-redevelopment era. This is an opportunity to do that. We urge you to take action tonight and approve this project. Thanks so much.
Mr. Carpio?
There is one thing that bothers me the most. This is the agreement that you cannot sue. And, I mean, what does your husband think about it? As he teach law, no? So, I mean, if you cannot sue because something goes wrong for whatever reason, I mean, there is something really wrong. I mean, I cannot buy that. And then, I think I know what I'm talking about. I did my thesis on pollution, so you're not going to teach me anything about it. And so if the thing is not the gap or if not remediation that is reliable, I mean, what do you think, Mr. Biddo? I mean, here we have, we have a real problem here. And just for that reason, I wouldn't, I would say no, I would postpone. And also, the other thing is, also bothers me, we have Mr. Cordova, who always voted yes for anything, because he's a developer. We should eliminate people like that. I mean, this is really a biased yes vote. This is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carpio? Any other public comment? No? Okay, with that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Have council discussion? Questions?
I actually would like to have somebody come up and explain the remediation, because at one time, I thought it was all going to be removed. And now, I think there's a change in plans. So somebody could clarify that point for me and also understand what conditions will the city be left with if we do it this way? Because I think that's a concern that we all share.
Earl James with EKI.
Earl, do you want to put in your...
I suppose there's a slide or two in there that might... Well, a lot of what Helen did kind of covered the basic... Can I plug this into this Logitech thing? Will it, it's a PowerPoint?
Maurice, do you know?
Yes.
Just be on your nose.
Anyway, I'll start talking and maybe we'll get some graphics, maybe we won't. Earl James with Earl Learn-Kalnowski. We prepared under contract to the former redevelopment agency this document, which is the FS RAP. It was a result of a lot of work with the US EPA, Department of Toxic Substances Control, and representatives of CBS and Wareham. And...
Andrew.
I was paid by the redevelopment agency.
Which is yours.
Yeah, no, it's the...
This one?
Yeah.
Could you just move your microphone up a little bit? You're taller than...
Thank you. Okay. I think you've seen this slide. In terms of remediation and what this site represents, I mean, this is a classic brownfield in the sense that it's a site that is stalled for redevelopment in the midst of an area that has been wonderfully redeveloped with office buildings and the Amtrak station and so forth. The history of it, that entire block where Emery Station Number Two, Emery Station Number One, that was all part of the former Westinghouse facility. The remediation that is currently proposed will, and now I've got to figure out how to change slides here. Let's go to slide four. This shows the current condition of the site and the outlines of the parking lot. You can see the locations where investigations have been conducted by consultants for Westinghouse, CBS, and EKI on behalf of the city are shown on this map. The thin contour lines that sort of circle around the center of the site are the current elevation of the site, with the mound that was created by the cap that currently covers the contamination, kind of represented by those curving lines through the middle. The heavier gray line around the outside is the slurry wall, which was, it's a mud wall, basically, that was dug to contain the area where these polychlorinated biphenols, PCBs, and the many other contaminants that are there are located. So currently, the plan is to... There was some additional soil sampling that was part of the plan that was conducted that's been completed. And then to do soil excavation to an elevation of approximately nine and a half feet above sea level. And that's removing the cap and several feet of the soils that are contaminated below the cap. That is going to accomplish the removal of a significant portion of the contamination by taking that off. Because what happened when they constructed the cap was they took some other contaminated soils that were around, they piled them inside this lurry wall on the top there, and then built the cap over the top. So this remediation is going to accomplish a very good thing of taking some of the highest levels of the PCB contamination off the site, out of your city, and have installed on top of it a more permanent cap in the form of the building and the foundations for the building, facilities that are more impermeable than the current cap is in many ways. There also will be some excavation of additional areas where there are very high concentrations of PCBs in the soil at these locations. And we're talking numbers that get up to like 24,000 milligrams per kilogram or parts per million of PCBs in soil. So these are areas of extremely high contamination and they'll be removed also as part of the remediation. The other aspect of it that's been talked about is the in-situ treatment of groundwater, where before the construction is conducted, there'll be injection of an oxidant to knock down the concentrations of chlorinated volatile organic compounds. And these are the kind of things that can leak out even with the cap that's on there now, because they're volatile. And another advantage of the project and the proposed development is that the new building will have a vapor control system built into it to capture these and discharge them in the appropriate manner to the atmosphere. So these volatile organic compounds are both going to get treated onsite by this injection that will take place before the development gets put on, and by treatment of the air from beneath the building. And these are the other aspects of the project. There'll be a barrier at the bottom of the excavation to protect the workers that are going to be working on it. The slurry wall will continue to function, and it's got now a decades-long history of containing the PCBs that are there. PCBs are not a chemical that move readily in the environment, except sort of physically, they're not, they don't migrate in groundwater, for instance. So the slurry wall was, at a certain level, kind of insurance against that. And then there are various institutional controls that have to do with the way various aspects of the site are handled. Does that answer your question?
Well, I think so. But can we go back to that one slide, the one before, where you had the different areas?
That one?
Yeah. And these work areas that are in these hatch. So you can go down and remove all of the PCBs in those areas, are those chemicals?
Yes, those are additional excavations. And there'll be other areas of deeper excavations that will be conducted for elevator shafts and pile caps and grade beams and things that are part of the construction of the building. So there's the one level, and then below that, there's hotspots that are getting taken out for PCBs and other areas where elevator shafts and various things are going to be.
So they'll still be, so all the hotspots, as you said, will be removed? Or what will be...
There are still some elevated concentrations of PCBs that will remain on the site. And there will still be various of the other contaminants that are related to it. They'll be inside the slurry wall and capped by the structure that's put at the bottom of the excavation and then the foundations of the building.
So these PCBs aren't really leaching any deeper, or...
No. No, they found the sort of, the full depth of them has been explored and evaluated.
Okay.
And they kind of sank, they were released in various ways up at the surface. They sank down to a certain level and the slurry wall is built below that level.
Okay.
And they're held in place there.
So there's no concern about the groundwater, or...
No.
No. And how deep would we have to go to remove it all?
It's another 15 feet or so, 15, 20 feet. One of the alternatives that we looked at was that there was a below grade, a below-grade parking there, a section of below-grade parking, which would take out a lot of that if that were to be constructed. But it's a difficult project to do, to take out those deeper levels, extremely expensive. And, you know, it's been secure the way that it's been constructed for a couple of decades, the way it sits now. So I think there's a combination in the current plan of taking out some of those highest concentrations that are closest to the surface, taking care, in a way, of breaking down the volatile organic compounds that are there with the injections, and then maintaining the containment that's there that's been proven to be effective for a long time.
Okay.
I have a question for you, Earl. I'm a little confused here. When you talk about, you're removing the top 10 feet?
Not quite.
Nine and a half?
Going to an elevation of nine and a half. And the top elevation of the mound is about 16, 17 feet. So it's about seven, eight feet at sort of the peak of the mound, down to an elevation of nine and a half, plus some deeper spots below that.
Well, the sea level there is about, what, 20, 22 feet down?
Below the ground surface.
So you're really not talking about going down, leaving toxics in there for, you know, a large amount of space? Because before you get too far, you're going to hit sea level.
Yeah, there's another 10 or 15 feet of contaminated soil below what's going to be dug out. And I have not looked at the cross-sections in a bit.
That elevation is 22 feet right there.
Okay.
So the question that I have, you know, when you compare those things, is there any estimate at all as to what amount of toxics would be left or the nature of the toxics? Has any testing been done on that?
Yes, it's been...
Could you elucidate on that?
Well, we, let me go back to another slide here and show you, look again at the slide where we have all of the sampling locations. So each one of these little dots with a number next to it is a place where some sort of boring or probe has been put into the ground, soil or groundwater or both, or vapors have been collected at those locations. And sort of the three-dimensional distributions of those chemicals is as well-known as it is at any site that we work with. You know, you don't know every ounce of soil that's there, but this is the way it's done. And that's a very extensive level of investigation that's been conducted to know what's down there.
So then, would you be able to tell us if the most concentration of the toxics is in the top 10 feet of the soil?
Some of the very highest concentrations are in that top portion that's going to get taken off the site, yes.
Have you found in any of these hotspots, high concentrations in the lower 20?
There are some higher concentrations. There's a couple of what I think of as kind of pipes.
Right.
Where, one story that I heard is, and you can see on our photos, there were tank cars that went out there and they would empty tank, or empty transformers sort of down. So there are a couple of pipes where the high concentrations go down. They're small areas. The tops of those are going to get taken off in the excavations and at some of those squares where the deeper excavations are.
Okay, thank you, Earl.
Jennifer?
Can I just follow up on a few of what you've mentioned? So it looks like from your legend here, the sampling was done in 2002 and 2004, and there's been groundwater monitoring. But what kind of sampling do you have over the last 10 years of, I mean, you said the slurry wall is containing it, I'm curious how you know that?
There's groundwater monitoring that goes on that is conducted by CBS. There's also a lot of groundwater monitoring on the other side of the railroad tracks that goes on. So I mean, Emeryville, with its industrial history, has a lot of monitoring roles around. So chemicals that are moving around show up in one network or another. And it's well-documented that the slurry wall has been effective at containing what's there for the decades that it has been installed. I haven't looked, but I know there's ongoing quarterly, annual groundwater monitoring going on at the site.
And the other things you said are not in the groundwater, you said PCBs are not in the groundwater?
Correct. So they're just sitting there in soil.
So you know that they haven't moved?
Right.
And how do you know that from...
Well, and I wouldn't know. I mean, I can't...
I wouldn't know, but I'm asking how you know.
But they're not, you know, people have studied... But they're not, you know, people have studied very extensively the sort of chemical nature of PCBs and how they react in the environment. And there are many sites similar to this. Westinghouse has released quite a large volume of PCBs into the environment and spent a lot of money investigating how they behave so that they can understand along with EPA and DTSC how to deal with them when they're found. So there's a lot of information that would say that these are, kind of where they get released is where they stay.
Okay. Did you at one point have a plan to clean this site further than the current plan?
We evaluated a couple of different, what they're called, alternatives in this document. They're all written up in there and kind of compared in terms of effectiveness and cost and the ability to implement them. So we did evaluate other approaches to it, to some degree, working with various ideas of how the site might get redeveloped.
And in terms of the area around it that you commented on that's already been redeveloped, how does this cleanup plan, because I was on the council at that time when those were approved, how does this cleanup plan compare to the sites nearby? Or alternatively, how is it different?
Well, it's really the same approach as all of the major sites in Emeryville have had. It's risk-based, so there are extensive calculations of what the human health risks are, both to people who are going to future might use and be around the site, to the workers who are going to be doing the kind of construction of the site. And all of the sites around here have some remnant of the contamination. And the cleanups are done in ways that allow the redevelopment to occur and limit the ongoing damage to the environment. And this is right in line with all of those. And it's following all the same guidance and, you know, they all have what we call fat books that document all the investigation and all the analysis. And this site is right in line with all those.
So this one's not worse than the other ones around it were?
Uh, no.
And the reason it's been capped and used as a surface parking lot instead of being developed is not related to what's in the soil?
Nope. It, it's really a, it's a financial thing. You know, it's a brownfield where it could get cleaned up and it can get cleaned up with the appropriate sort of business structure around it. And that's why all the other ones have gotten cleaned up as well through one mechanism or another.
And this kind of follows on Councilmember Davis's question, but what's, what's left after the excavation? And I understand now it's not excavating nine and a half feet down, you're excavating two nine and a half feet above sea level.
Correct.
That's the nine and a half. So we, it's a little different than what we heard earlier. But what's left underneath?
What's left are the same chemicals that Helen had in her list of the PCBs, chloro-benzines, the chlorinated volatile organic compounds. They will be there. The chlorinated volatile organic compounds, and I believe some of the chloro-benzines, will be broken down to one degree or another by the injection of the oxidants. And some of the very highest concentrations of the PCBs will be removed, some of them in limited areas below the footprint of the building will remain behind the slurry wall.
And under the foundation?
And under the foundation, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Before you did your study, I heard from another, and there were only two of us on the council who are still here tonight, but I, I heard something that disturbed me a dozen years ago, which is that the nature of the slurry wall was measured in terms of viscosity. And to me, that implies permeability. And while that was acceptable, the slurry wall was built only with the PCBs in mind, which as you've indicated are pretty static contaminants. You've also acknowledged that there are things that can get through the slurry wall, such as VOCs and some of the other things that are in there. So the fact that the slurry wall would, would remain in a, in a technology that was maybe fine for the time that it was done certainly would not be used today. And this is a once-in-a-multi-generational opportunity to, to do the job right in terms of the remediation that has to happen there. So the fact that the slurry wall, which is measured in terms of viscosity, is still remaining with a outmoded technology, while that might be fine for the most stable contaminant, it isn't okay for the VOCs. So my question to you is what percent of contaminants will remain that are not being excavated? You said most will be removed, but is that 80%? Is it 60%? Is it 51%? What's going to remain because it's below the level of the dig?
You know, I have not calculated what the remaining percentages might be. We have made various calculations of what the sort of exposure point concentrations, there are various terms and ways that, that these chemicals concentrations are calculated to use in the risk-based assessments. And those calculations say that doing the remediation that's proposed, building the cap of the building that's proposed will result in a safe site. I, I will, it is true that the slurry wall was installed to contain the PCBs. It's not correct that the slurry wall is outmoded technology. Slurry walls are well-proven, long-term-used technologies mainly to help control water movement. And really what we're worried about with those other contaminants is water. And the slurry wall changes the way the water moves out there so that the water moves around it. Water really doesn't move through that slurry wall. So the slurry wall was and is an effective technology. And the remediation plan has added in sort of our latest thing that we do, which is injection of the oxidants to break down the volatile organic compounds. So that is, is the kind of modern addition that this current approach to the remediation adds. And frankly, you know, taking the PCBs, piling them in trucks, putting a bunch of, you know, carbon into the atmosphere, trucking them down to Kettelman Hills or up to, right now you couldn't even take them to Kettelman Hills because that landfill isn't open, taking them up to Oregon or off to Nevada or wherever. I'm not sure that that, you know, what's left is in a place that will cause no harm based on what we know. And the trade-off between taking the hot stuff off the top and leaving some behind is not a bad balance in what's proposed here. You know, it's approved by EPA, it's approved by DTSC. A lot of time and energy's gone into the study of it. And it's, it's what we do today.
How would the site correlate to Bay Street, the site B? Were you involved in that site?
Yes.
So is it comparable as far as what, what happened at Bay Street versus what you're proposing here? Are your recommendations here?
Yes, I mean, we did basically the same thing at Bay Street, excavated to the extent necessary to allow the redevelopment to occur in a cost-effective way. And we are currently conducting and continuing to conduct injection of chemicals to break down the chlorinated volatile organic compounds that are there. There are remaining concentrations of arsenic and other chemicals of concern that are above background, clearly an impact from human activities, but at a level that the risk-based assessment that we conducted says is safe for the future uses. There will be as part of that redevelopment vapor controls installed on the buildings. So it's very equivalent to what was done at Site B.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any more questions for Earl, but I would like to hear from Mr. Biddle on this no-sue clause, if we could have a little more clarification on that, because I think it is a cause of concern for the council and the community. We don't like letting people off the hook in this down.
Well, as you know, currently CBS, they control the site and they have entered into a consent decree with the US EPA, which was entered into back in 1985. And in discussions with CBS over the years, it's been their position that by virtue of having entered into this consent decree, that, that they are protected from any ability of the city or to, you know, to pursue them, or the redevelopment agency, I should say, to pursue them, to force a greater cleanup. We evaluated that position and believe that at the time that the redevelopment agency through its powers pursuant to the Planco Redevelopment Act, that we would have the ability to force a cleanup beyond what had already been done, the cap. Now, of course, that's, that's a legal position of lawyers and it takes money to pursue lawsuits and to, to force your position upon a party. And so I think it was the, really the direction of, of the council some years back. There was a prior version of the remediation agreement and escrow agreement where the, you know, to sort of gain CBS's cooperation and pursue a greater cleanup of the site, that the parties would split the costs of the, of the cleanup. And of course, redevelopment has gone away. Likewise, the redevelopment powers under the Planco Redevelopment Act have also gone away. However, there has been a, a new bill, GATO, bill that came effective in January that gives cities sort of equivalent authority, but there are some other elements to that that, that don't make it quite as flexible as it was for, for redevelopment. But in any event, it, it's been a negotiated position between the city and CBS and Wareham that if CBS moves forward with the cleanup pursuant to a cleanup plan that, that we approved, that we would then release them from any further claims. And this is not at all inconsistent, the position of that is not at all inconsistent with the agreement that we entered into with, let's say, HSP for the cleanup of the Greenway. And likewise, agreements that we reached in settlement with, with some of the parties on Site B where they've agreed to fund their share. They are saying they're buying peace. Okay, we're putting in money, but city, we don't want you coming back after us if the cleanup is, is conducted in accordance with the plan that you've approved. And so that's the similar position that we are proposing here tonight. We aren't indemnifying them, so we're not taking on any responsibility for any cleanup. We're just releasing them from any ability of the city to pursue them based on what we know today. It does not give them any protection from the federal government or the state government to go after them if they, you know, if they change their mind about how they want to treat various chemicals. So, which is frankly, it's not unheard of for the state, the federal government, to change their mind and change course as we are currently experiencing with our sanitary sewer litigation with the federal and state government. So again, it does not give CBS any protection from the state or federal government. It just does provide them some level of comfort that the city of Emeryville is not going to pursue them in the future should they commence and complete the cleanup that's been approved by the state and federal government.
Thank you, Michael.
Other questions from council?
No questions.
I have a few other questions that are not related to the environmental portion. I don't know if we're done with that portion.
Yeah, let's, let's pick it up here.
Okay, great. I have a few questions about the Wareham buildings nearby and also the Amtrak parking. And some of these I asked of staff earlier and had a response and I'll repeat now for the public, but some may be new and I don't know if you'll have this information handy. When we first looked at the parking for this site and the number of parking spaces, that was before we passed our new zoning code updates. And my question is, that would, would the parking required again for the site also be updated according to our new parking updates? And another parallel question to that is about how many spaces are in existing Wareham buildings and what the utilization rates of those are.
So the first question is whether the parking in Emery Station West, the parking required in Emery Station West, the requirement would be changed now?
Would it be changed, would it be different if it were coming forward under our new zoning code update?
Well, yes, it would be different if, if the project were coming forward now for entitlements. It would be substantially less actually because this project is in fact right in the middle of a transit hub zone, which reduces all parking by half to begin with. But the project was entitled in 2010 and so it is subject to the parking requirements that were in effect in 2010 when it was approved.
Thank you. And as to utilization rates in current Wareham buildings, I know that buildings, or parking spaces get leased by tenants, that's I understand the, the processes, but do we know what actually is used, utilization rates?
So maybe a representative from Wareham Development could answer that?
Sure.
Just one clarification to what Charlie said. The project was designed before the parking ratios were lowered, but we asked for permission to have a lower parking ratio. So it was designed and approved at 2 per thousand, which I think is sort of in the middle, is certainly well below what the requirement was over 3 per thousand back at the time of its approval. We think that's the right number. So in terms of our parking, it's getting, it's very highly utilized. I mean, it ebbs and flows, but close to the top because we have followed the elevation, the evolution of Emeryville and its transit development. And so each of our projects is sort of built less parking. So we've been averaging down the total kind of ratio per square foot of our campus. And, and thank goodness, we've been doing that partially leading and partially following people's adoption of transit. So, so we're trying to only build what we have to at any one period of time to right-size it, if that answers your question. But it is highly utilized.
And is the parking shared among all the buildings? Because you have quite an extensive campus with, you know?
Well, we have the opportunity to do that so that you can right-size it. And that is a unique opportunity that you've heard share, you know, sharing of parking between different uses. It's very hard if you had three spots because there just aren't enough to diversify. We've gotten big enough that we can do that and yes, we do.
Do you know how many total spaces you, you have?
Well, it depends on which properties you include and so forth, but I'm, you know, not giving you an exact number. I think it's, you know, 13 or 1,400.
Okay, and so the new, I believe it's somewhere in the 800 range for both of these, the whole project?
Yeah, 125 are public, so we're not going to count those. The 675 is effectively 2 per thousand.
Okay.
For what we're, for the private portion of the project.
In one of the reports that I read for today's council packet, it talked about the number of full-time jobs that are being created by this project. And that was in the 600 range. And I was surprised that you would need more parking spaces than you have full-time equivalent employees.
Well, there are visitors to any project, so that's one of, one of the issues. The other reason it's larger is that structure sits on a surface parking lot of over 200 spaces now. So the 675 includes replacing the over 200 that are there today. So in terms of new, it's well down to 400 and something, which is the 2 per thousand. Our building's a little more than 200,000 square feet, so the new parking spaces are 450 and the extra are the 220 there today.
And those 220s serve primarily, well, And those 220s serve primarily, well, all of your buildings or Heritage?
Well, it's the parking lot west of, behind of Heritage Square. And so it primarily serves the users in that building.
Okay. And is that, is that well utilized, that parking space?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
That, for example, you were invited to an opening of a children's clinic of Stanford. That's where, if you took your kid there, you would park to take them into the clinic.
I've also seen a big sign there that has the mayor's son's name on it. Have you seen that?
Yes, free.
Yes, free.
Yeah, the frozen drink, yes.
Jack, I have another question for you, Jeff. After the last dollar, of course. What do you think are the chances that we could convince Amtrak to give up free parking for its patrons and go to charging for parking?
I'd certainly be interested in exploring that. You want to...
I think that's an avenue that we want to take a look at because you don't get free parking when you go to the airport. And Bard is in a kind of a changing mode too. It's time we start to look at that.
You don't want to discourage ridership, but you want to encourage them to come to the train in the most efficient way.
Exactly, exactly.
If I can, I believe one of the provisions of the STIP grant that we're receiving from the state anticipates that the parking for Amtrak patrons will be provided gratis. So certainly something we can explore, but as I said, that's one of the provisions of the grant.
I understand that, Michael, but if you don't start the journey, you never get there.
Just advising you that that's a hurdle to overcome.
And is there someone who could talk about the utilization rates for those 125 parking places at Amtrak? Who monitors that?
I can.
Okay, thank you.
So, right now, there are 215 spaces on the mound and 125 are sublet to the agency, the successor agency. But it becomes more complicated to monitor that than not. So what we are doing, so let me step back and say, that was used for sort of transient parking visitors, both Amtrak and to our campus. And for example, anyone could park there and visit any business or, for whatever reason, they could take the pedestrian bridge across the street if they wanted to.
For the terraces.
Correct. There's parking for the terraces there. So we saw enough transient demand that a number of years ago, we opened the terraces garage to allow any empty spaces, you were talking about utilization, any empty spaces to be used by transient parkers if they were available. So if that day, office workers were on vacation or out making sales calls or whatever, you could put people in there. So we've been allowing transient parkers into the terraces for some time, including Amtrak parkers. So there are plenty of days when, you know, you can't know if people come and are paying and not Amtrak or they are. Because you don't know when the Amtrak people will come and so forth. So we believe they're highly utilized. It is sometimes seasonal. Now, this year, there isn't much snow, but a typical winter, more people use the train because they go for multi-day getaways to the Sierras. They like to take the train because you don't get stuck in the pass, or almost never. So we think they're pretty highly utilized. And that's why maybe, I mean, clearly there's a legal problem, but I think Amtrak and the Capitol Court are practical people and they want not to discourage ridership, but they're also bringing buses to allow the riders to come. So it's, you know, the Amtrak long haul is a different thing. But I think probably the most important part of this project for the city is its commuter function.
Other questions, comments?
I do have another question for Jeff. Sorry, Jeff, don't go away. My question next is about occupancy and vacancy in terms of Wareham buildings. I know that Wareham, I think, controls most of the bio science labs, tech kind of labs in the city, more than, I know you also have office space, but we have other places that have more office space and less biotech.
Right.
And so I'm curious, and also in West Berkeley, which is very closely, not only geographically, but aligned in terms of our interests, I'm curious about the occupancy rates in those buildings.
So they're very highly occupied. Our newest building is not, but it's a very tiny percentage overall of our whole campus and portfolio. And that's how we look at it. Second, we built that building primarily to house the kind of tenants that you mentioned we mostly house, which are people in the research, life science, green tech, medical fields. And we built the building to allow for that because you need special, not any building can handle that. And so we would have been able to lease that building three times over if we would have done normal office leasing like much of the rest of the community does. We haven't really wanted to do that because we're preserving it for what we think is a really core customer base, a key business sector that we do business with and I think provides benefits to the city.
And how does the new transit center building fit into that puzzle in terms of occupancy and vacancy?
Well, so these things don't come up in a day. They take years to build. You know, we're confident the Greenway will be filled long before this building could be ready. And one of the realities of our business is we've historically built buildings primarily speculatively. We'd love not to. We'd love for a tenant to say, build me, I'll lease the whole building, start it. It just, the market doesn't tend to work that way. We don't have the luxury. Many of the companies in the science business are very funding dependent and they need it when they need it. And if you don't have it, they go find it somewhere else. And in our business, they don't come back. Those tenants who have moved out of the Emeryville market, certainly more have moved out of the Berkeley market, once you lose them, they're gone. So we have sort of found it's key to keep those people rooted here by always having room for them in advance of their needs. Does that answer your question?
I guess. It's a little insurance there, extra space for expansion.
Correct.
But, and so you believe that by building, is it 248,000 square feet, that there will be a need when it's completed? That's your...
Yes, yes. And that's been our experience over a long period of time.
Okay, thank you.
More questions? No? Comments? Council, Nora?
Sure, I'll make a comment. I just want to say that I think we've worked long and hard at this project. And I'd like to make a comment about the statement that was made that the planning commission voted against this project. That's not accurate. Two members out of a seven-member planning commission voted against the project, two voted for it, and two abstained on the project. And I think one of the statements that the no votes on the planning commission said it was not, they didn't consider that this project was in the public interest. Well, that can be a matter of semantics, a matter of definition, what you consider to be in the public interest. I think this project very much is in the public interest for this city. I think getting rid of more of the toxicity, thank you, I agree with Kurt. I'm a little dismayed that there's going to be some residuals there, but I think it's probably, this is the best that we can do here. I also believe that if the project moves forward, the building itself will be a pretty hefty cap on the toxics. And I don't anticipate any kind of comeback to the city on, from CBS on any kind of litigation for this. So it's a good project. It's long overdue. We are in a battle now in terms of the bio science industry. We have some strong competitors, not only in South San Francisco, but also down in Fremont and Hayward now. So if we're going to keep that nucleus of bio science, it's time to move ahead on this project. So I would move the two resolutions on the project.
I think there's three.
Oh, no, no, the ordinance is a different thing.
So one thing that we haven't talked about tonight is the financial arrangements that have been brokered for this deal. And I didn't like them last time they came to the council either. This, for me, has to do with promising our property tax revenue from the site for 12 years after completion, or it's more complicated because if the public parts are done first, it's seven years plus. I guess originally, I think the deal was that we were splitting the remediation costs upfront. And there's some uncertainty with that, but certainly, to me, there's additional uncertainty by promising future revenue funds. And I don't like that kind of gamble of the future, not knowing what will happen and what needs we might have for our general fund at that time. I also, I take issue with the idea that if we don't use some of this money, it's lost by distributing money to our taxing entities, of which we are 11%, I believe, if I have the number right. It's not lost, actually, that that would be some money coming back to us, but also going to other public agencies. I am glad for some site remediation, even if it doesn't go quite as far as one would hope, but it seems to be kind of on par with what we have in our town. So I think that's a plus. I'm also glad for some transit improvements that are mentioned, but it doesn't go as far as I would like. It's not as creative around transit as I'd like. And that's partly what we have in place. And maybe in the future, there will be more that it will support, but it's not enough right now. I am glad for the improvement to the PED bridge over the Amtrak rail. I feel that that connection could be improved by just about anything in some ways. But I'm going back to the fact that I don't like the financial arrangements for this project.
Ruth, yeah, sure.
I want to weigh in a couple of things. First of all, Emeryville, through Wareham, has made a concerted effort to develop its biotech cluster. And this adds capacity to that event, to that goal. I'm not sure everybody is aware of all the cool stuff that's happening in town now around a lot of the R and D efforts that are taking place. But there was a period where the biofuels that Amorus was working on, it was advertised because it was fueling one of the go-round shuttle buses. So I think the goals that biotech has to, in terms of the problems that they're tackling and the solutions that they want to find, deserve support. I think that if this building had been operational a few years back, we might have won the bid to get LBNL, which would have been quite a feather in our cap. I know you guys worked very hard to submit a competitive bid for that. And ultimately UC went with land that it owned. So I support the idea to activate that site with a much higher and better use than just a parking lot. And this represents, in my mind, really the best and last offer to reduce the amount of surface parking and to put a constructive use on site here. I don't like the fact that the toxics, while they seem to have passed muster with two regulatory agencies, the fact that, I don't know if this is going to be as cleaned up percentage-wise, couldn't get a percentage tonight with a direct question, but how this compares, say, with Sherwin-Williams or some of the other stuff. But for the generations that come way past this existing council, I for one take pride in the fact that every, I can say to friends and others that every time there's a new building in Emeryville, it means that the ground underneath it is cleaner than what happened before. And in terms of being environmental stewards and in terms of protection of the public health, the two regulatory agencies have certainly weighed in on the protection for human health. And I would be remiss just to let this, let the contaminants lie there without putting a higher and better use on this land. So for that reason, it's not, it's not ideal. We've, various council members have indicated things that we wish would come from it, but it is activating a site that the consent decree only allows for surface parking because it's too hot for anything else. And so to me, that's an overriding public benefit, is that we're going to be able to activate that land and put it to use and hopefully with some of the brightest and most creative minds that are tackling the problems that our world faces today. So I'm going to, I'm going to support these resolutions. And I think that not just for this generation, but for generations to come, benefits will continue to come in direct and indirect ways.
Not a second, Ruth, with the resolution. Thank you.
And I'm in support of it too. And I have to, mine might be slightly different. You know, we control Bay Street as far as what happened there, we, the taxpayers. And so I feel it's fair, whatever we allowed at Bay Street to have happen at the site. But that's, actually, it's the vision, that this vision that Wareham Property has had for that property for 20, 30 years. I remember what Westinghouse used to look like at that corner. And I think that there has to be a balance here. We talked about housing. We built a lot of new housing in town, but we also have to have jobs for those people that live here. So I think this is a real opportunity for, to have that community that has jobs for the people who live in the city. And I think this project can bring it. And it's just the right thing. It's the vision that's been in this town for over 30 years about making things happen. Who would have, I remember the, actually, the first time that the Amtrak station opened. I thought, what a crazy idea, putting the Amtrak station there. Now you said 1.7 million people go through it. So I mean, this is a city that has embraced crazy ideas and the crazy ideas have worked out. So I mean, I fully support this project. It's another crazy idea, but it's a crazy idea that will be around for a long time and will provide benefits for all of us that live in the city.
Okay. And with my final comments, I'm not going to be able to support this project. I don't think that it has enough public benefits attached to it. I agree that the public plaza is going to be a replication of other mistakes, really, that we've made in having those privately operated plazas. I think that what we've seen from the planning commission, if we don't want to call it a no, we want to call it a deep ambivalence. And for something that's been in the works for so long, I don't think that people should feel that way about it. I think that with the amount of money that, the public money that's been, being put into this and with the amount of time that's been spent on it, that we should have a much better project than we do. And I also am really bothered by the financial arrangements. Redevelopment is done. It is done. We should not try to create new redevelopment deals that cream off the tax increment because with these developments, they have impacts, right? With growth, we are going to need to fund other things. We're going to need to fund our infrastructure. We're going to need to fund more services. And we are not able to subsidize developers because we have to make sure that we're holding up our end of the bargain in terms of services. And I really think that that, you know, for all the ways that I may have felt also ambivalent about this project, that 12 years of tax increment makes me very certain that I just cannot support it. So with that, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Brinkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
No.
Vice Chair Atkins.
Aye.
I'm sorry, not chair. Mayor Asher.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
No. Okay.
Move the first reading of the ordinance.
We need to read by, motion to read by title only, first please.
That's what I mean, motion. Sorry about that, lost my head.
And Councilmember Brinkman, you second the motion to read by...
I did, I did. Yes, sir, Mr. Biddle, I did.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. So it's an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Emeryville approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a development agreement between the City of Emeryville and Emery Station Associates LLC regarding the Emery Station West at Emery Transit Center slash Heritage Square Garage Project.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Should we take roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinkman.
Brinkman, aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
No.
Vice Mayor Atkin.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
No.
Okay. Thank you. Items...